Ready, Mayor?
Yeah.
When you're here.
Right.
Welcome. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you. All right, so we're going to begin this evening's meeting with an oath of office for a police officer. Commissioner, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to introduce Mike Rosari. Mike was born in Queens, Razor Valley Stream. He attended Valley Stream High School, Central High School, and graduated in 2016. He enlisted in the Marine Corps in 2016 as an MV-22 Avionics Technician. He attended the Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paris Island, for recruit training. He was later deployed overseas with the 26th Marine Expeditionary Unit, providing rapid crisis response aid and security as the Regional 9/11 Force. Mike was awarded the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, and Sea Service Deployment Ribbon. He served five years and was Amblesman Sergeant as a Sergeant in 2021. In 2022, he joined the New York City Fire Department, became a firefighter in ladder company 30, located home. He is currently attending the Nassau County Police Academy and all the reports I've received so far that he's doing very well.
Thank you. Garcia Mariano.
Raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Michael Rosari.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
Duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as Deputy Mayor and Police Commissioner of Village Garden City, I declare you duly appointed. Congratulations.
Right. And next on the agenda, we have Board approval of a volunteer firefighter, Luca Pipitone. Would you like to introduce?
Good evening. Mr. Pipitone is a recent graduate of the Garden City High School, having completed his studies in 2022. Currently, he is attending trade school to become an operating engineer. When he's not in school, he helps his father at the business where he fabricates and installs marble and granite. When asked about his reasons for becoming a volunteer firefighter, he expressed his desire to give back to the community that has always supported him and provided him with so much work. We look forward to welcoming Luca as one of our volunteers and appreciate his dedication to positively impacting his community.
I just want to say, you know, on behalf of the Board, a special thank you. It's when we have a new volunteer, it's always a great moment. It's, I think, the most impactful volunteer position in our community, and thank you for stepping up and joining the fire department. All right, so next on the agenda, we have quick resident comments of no more than a minute. This is something we added not too long ago for residents who are unable to stay for the meeting, but had something quick, less than a minute, that they wanted to share with the Board of Trustees. If there's anyone in the room who has a quick comment who's unable to stay for the meeting, you're welcome to come up to the microphone now. We don't have any quick resident comments in the room. So we'll move on to comments by department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering 11 items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention on the Public Works. Item number 14 is a request to formally accept and sign the bipartisan infrastructure grant for emerging contaminants for Well 9. This grant is for up to $2 million and is in addition to the $3 million already granted under the Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant. It is noted that this grant will generate some contract or change orders in the future due to the work requirements not being in the signed contract scope. Item number 15 is a request for permission to piggyback off the Hicksville Water District contract to purchase hydrogen peroxide. Hydrogen peroxide is used for AOP treatment and is ordered on an as-needed basis. The language in the Hicksville Agreement allows the village to use this contract, and the supplier, USP, has also agreed. Item number 16 is a request to approve the proposal from Philip Ross Industries in the amount of $74,661.75 for the reconditioning of Well 15 at Hilton Park. Tests have indicated very high iron levels that are not within acceptable ranges to achieve proper iron removal. The well has sat idle for an extended period of time during construction, which is likely creating this issue. The well will be air-surged, chemically treated, and bailed out under this change order. Item number 17 is a request to approve a transfer and to ratify a change order, too, in the amount of $22,394.74 for the Seventh Street Crosswalk Project. Additional work was performed and needed in order to properly complete the project. The necessary work included extension of the paving limits, alterations to install new manhole and casting, additional survey hours, additional excavation, and additional subgrade material. These charges needed to be approved prior to obtaining BLT authorization in order to keep the project on track and expedite completion prior to Thanksgiving. Item number 18 is a request to engage H2M at a cost of $170,000 to provide professional engineering services to design and inspect the replacement of the water main on Clayton Road from Stewart Avenue to Old Country Road. This water main has already been identified as needing replacement. However, the county has recently notified the village that they will be repaving this section of road in the spring of 2024, which has accelerated the need for replacement. The village will save substantial restoration expenses by not having to install final pavement. It should be noted that after the completion of this project, the village will have a new water main throughout the corridor of Clayton Road from Meadow to Old Country Road. Item number 19 is a request to ratify the engagement of H2M in the amount of $30,000 for the administration of the Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant for AOP treatment projects at Wells 7, 13, 14, 15, and 16. This work is required to allow our vendor to continue providing administration services in order to obtain the full amount of the $13.68 million that has been awarded to the village under this grant. There's a tremendous amount of reporting required for grant reimbursement. Item number 20 is a request to engage H2M in the amount of $38,800 for professional services to design and inspect necessary improvements to various water storage tanks throughout the village. Recent water storage tank inspections performed by H2M have identified these repairs and are needed. Item 21 is a request to transfer $50,000 and to create a new capital project for the library grounds improvements. The proposed improvements include the installation of new concrete planter boxes on the front walkway, new library ground lights, concrete and decorative benches, repair of the kiosk, and replacement of a sign that faces the intersection of Hilton and 7th. Item number 22 is a request to accept the maintenance bond in the amount of $22,152 from Dennis O'Regan Electric for the completion of the installation of the LED streetlight fixtures in Parkfield 7S, 9E, and 12. The maintenance bond guarantees the work for 18 months from the acceptance of this bond. The bond has been reviewed and approved by Village Council. Under award of bids, item number 23 is a request to award the bid for a new roofing system at the Garden City Water Department through statewide roofing at a cost of $439,069. I'm sorry, $439,069. The project was placed on the New York State Contract Reporter, and four bids were received. The roof needs to be replaced as it has surpassed its useful life. There are leaks in the roof penetrating into the building, and the existing roof drains were roofed over and will be reestablished. Item number 24 is a request to renew item two of the village building and vehicle cleaning services contract with Islandwide for an additional 90 days. Item two is for cleaning services at the Garden City Library. Additional extensions beyond the 90 days will be subject to a performance review. I would also like just to provide a few quick updates. I'd like to thank our village highway crews that worked through the night during Sunday's storm. We were notified by the police department that flooding was occurring and responded immediately. All flooding locations were monitored, and the crews utilized our new water department vac truck to help maintain the street flooding and protect homeowners' properties from damage. I would also like to thank our water department, Mr. Carey, for handling two water main breaks in the village this week. Leaf season is coming to an end. As of December 11th, landscapers are no longer allowed to put leaves to the curb. Homeowners who rake and clean their own property can bag the leaves and put them out on rubbish day. Water tests are still available. One can be obtained by scanning the QR code that's outside the boardroom or by phone or email. This information can be found on the village website. Recycling stickers that may be placed on the inside top rim of the recycling pail are available at the library, senior center, and village hall. These stickers will help residents remember what can go inside the green recycling pail. Finally, after the holiday season has ended, we'll begin our grease trap inspection program. An individual from our awarded vendor, DeBerker &amp; Bartolucci, will be performing these inspections. They will have an ID badge to identify themselves as well as a notification letter. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions?
Superintendent, in terms of the clearing of the roads during those rainstorms, I think that saved lives, and I wanted to thank the workers who worked through the night to do that and made the roadway safer. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had one quick question, Ms. Mayor. Commissioner Barone, with regard to number 23, my recollection is that that bid came in substantially lower than the amount of money that we had voted on to potentially pay for a new roof there.
That's correct. The bid received came in a little over half the amount that we projected.
Thank you.
How long was that roof?
The last time it was done was, according to the engineer, 2000. It is, I would have to look into that and get back to you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barone. Ms. Wu.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and trustees and residents, everyone in the room. Under Finance, the first item is Transfer of Funds. $60,000 was requested by the Water Department to transfer from their regular salary line to materials and supplies for replacement of fire hydrants in the village that were discovered during recent inspections to be out of service. Another transfer was requested in the Capital Projects Fund to fund the curbs for a capital project, the safety surfaces for the neighborhood parks. In order to install the safety surfaces, curbs had to be installed first. Item number two is receipt of the deferred compensation audit report. The village participates in a deferred compensation plan. The village does not contribute towards that plan. That's an employee contribution-only plan. However, because the village chooses to not be under the New York State plan, the village is required, under New York State law, to conduct annual audits. So the audit for the 2022 calendar year has been completed, reviewed with the Finance and Audit Committee, and provided to the Board. Item number three is the year-end audit report that has been finalized. Again, this has been reviewed with the village's Finance and Audit Committee, and copies have been provided and will be posted on the village's website once the Board accepts the report. Number four is appropriation of termination reserves. Authorization is requested to appropriate $188,462.74 from the reserve for compensated absences for an employee who left village service in the police department. Item number five is appropriation of funds. Board authorization is requested to appropriate $800,000 from building deposits to partially fund the capital project, the sewer system upgrade. This is resulting from the agreement the village entered into with NYU Langone for the sewer main upgrade project that is needed as a result of the change of use of the former Sears building, which required an upgrade to the sewer system. Because a temporary CO has been issued for that building, we are now able to appropriate $800,000 from the deposit they had initially provided to the village. So Board authorization is to do that. And those are the finance items tonight. Any questions?
So the $800,000 is what they essentially paid us. They gave us a deposit, and we're using money from that deposit.
That's correct. The deposit was a little over $1 million. So we will be holding or keeping $800,000, refunding the remainder to them. And they also, per that same agreement, agreed to provide the village $50,000 for the former Lord &amp; Taylor Building. So once that temporary CO is issued, we will be receiving that additional $50,000 for the same project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had one quick question, Ms. Mayor. Thank you. Treasurer Wu, just on number four, was the police officer that left the department, was it a retirement? Or was it a change of jobs?
Yeah, you can answer it.
Retirement's only one year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. The building department has no items on the formal agenda this evening, but just wanted to give the Board an performance for the month of November. Total building permits issued is 119 for the month of November. The inspections performed were 242, and the total revenue incurred is 262, 262,000 for the month of November. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. If the Board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Giuseppe, why don't you give us an update on the Edgema Firehouse event? Thanks.
Sure. We're going back and forth, as you know, working with Deputy Mayor on Edgema Firehouse. We had some sort of falling out with the existing design architects. They came back to us with absurd amount of design of the new extension towards the southwest corner of the building, as we discussed, to square off the back of the building there to provide an elevator stair tower and janitor's closet and storage room, basically squaring off the back of the building there. So it was understood. They went back to the drawing board to design that. Prior to doing that, I asked them to revise their number because it was not part of the RFP, so they came back to us with a number of $318,000 as additional fund. And I pulled the brakes on it. I wasn't about to entertain that to the Board. So what I did was send them an email with that response, and they basically sent an email back saying, "This is what we're looking for to continue." And I basically told them that, you know, "The Board is not going to accept this kind of number. I think it's absurd." So what we did was sent them an email back to respond, and they did. They said they wanted withdrawal from the project. They want to give us an invoice as far as what's queued up to this point and send us the documents up to date with the up-to-date invoice. So we can basically cut the ties with them if the Board wished to do that. I'm still preparing all this paperwork. This just happened a few days ago. So we're still in the transition to that. So actually, this week, I reached out to the second lowest bidder, which was Lizardo's Architects and Engineers, had a meeting with them here in this office, in this boardroom, brought them on site for a walkthrough, had a conversation as far as if they can pick up this project where we're leaving off, and they willing to do that, they want to pick up the project. They're coming back to me with a number. They were the second lowest bid, and their bid was $98,000, which is a lot less than $318 to continue with BBS Architects. So right now, as it stands, that number is $98,000. If we choose to continue, they're supposed to come back to me either with that number or something less because we actually completed the design stages of the project already. But with that said, even though we were at design stages, we're completed, the RFP doesn't depict as far as the elevator, the extension, and so forth. So the language is a little different. So I'm getting that and writing from them as far as if it's going to be either awash for design versus new addition or a decrease in the RFP number. So I'm still getting that from them. I should have that hopefully next week from the design architect.
So the RFP, the original RFP that they gave, didn't have the additional things?
It did not. No. The RFP that went out, the addition was 3A option, which is basically just renovating the existing building. And 3A option was a building on the west side of, you know, the addition was on the west side of the building. It did not show the squaring off the back of the building. So that's the addition. So with that addition, that new add-on, add alternate, let's say, BBS is asking for additional funding, which I think is ridiculous.
For the amount of space.
It's more than 10% of the original RFP amount, which they bid on to do this whole complete design, of $36,000. So I had to pull the trigger on that. I know we lost a lot of time, but we have to make educated decisions on this.
Okay. Now, the original bid did not include those items, that they wouldn't have put that in there?
It did not, Deputy Mayor. It did not include that. So we're just going to, you know, now we're hitting the ground running with the actual design. We have design development drawings already performed, so we know what we were looking for. We just have to make sure the number is correct. And worst-case scenario, the number will be $98,000, which is still better than 318.
Sure is.
Yeah, definitely is.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Recreation has several items on the agenda this evening. Starting with number 11, we are requesting to purchase an additional pickup truck beyond what we had identified in the capital budget. We were notified by our head mechanic, John Gardner, that two of our trucks, which are 14-year-old and have upwards of 190,000 miles on them, are in need of thousands of dollars of repairs, and the truck bodies and frames are full of rust. So what we would like to do is transfer some money from the community park retaining wall into recreation equipment. And with the money that we have saved over our capital purchases over the past year, we would like to purchase a new truck from Ford over on Hempstead Lincoln, Hempstead Ford Lincoln, at a cost of $49,668. The purchase would be made through a Westchester County contract, so we know we're getting a good price. We just went out for one of these trucks about a month ago. This will bring our fleet back up to the number of trucks that we need. Beyond that, we have two maintenance bonds being sent into the village by National Installation and GC Corp. This is for the renovation of the Tolemore Park and Nassau Haven Park tennis courts. This will warranty their work for 18 months from the acceptance of the bond. In addition to that, just a couple of notes from our department. In the next week or so, we are going to see a lot of tree work, starting in the village. We are having the stump grinding, the removals, and the pruning done. And we are also having 214 new trees put in, and that will start next week. Couple of program notes. The holiday season is here, and so on Wednesday, December 27th, at 1:00 in Cluett Hall, we'll be running a holiday movie program. No charge, no registration. Just come on down and have some fun. And then on December 31st, New Year's Eve, starting at 12:00, we'll have a New Year's Eve party also in Cluett Hall. That will include a performance by a magician, hats, noise makers, a countdown to 12 midnight, which really won't be midnight. And the only thing we ask for folks for that is to give our office call and register. There is no charge for that either. That's all I have this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a couple of hours on New Year's Eve, Paul, from 12 noon.
Yeah, I think it goes from 12 till about 2:00.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll have my grandchildren go.
Bring them over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on the agenda tonight. It's in August, the Board authorized two Crest grants to Senator Thompson's offices, one to Mr. Swazie and one to the police department. On Monday, no, Tuesday, we were approved. We received the notification we approved with our grant. However, we had a 30-day window to order the vehicles and have all the purchase orders completed. I want to thank Irene and Cassie from Purchasing for really helping us with this transaction. What we're trying to do is transfer $180,000 for the Business District paving to police vehicles. And once we complete all the projects and get the money back, then it goes back into the Business District paving. And that's for the purchase of three vehicles. On the monthly statistics report, we had a busy November. We had 1,889 police incidents. We had 62 case investigations, 13 arrests, eight impounds, that's vehicle impounds. We had 158 medical service calls, 87 accident reports. We issued 1,006 traffic tickets, 1,897 parking tickets, and five quality-of-life tickets. That's all I have, Mayor.
Just want to say, Commissioner Jackson, your police force has done an outstanding job in many different ways, even to my families or for my family. So thank you very much for all the work they've done.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, one, may I, Mayor, one complaint that we heard tonight at the Traffic Commission meeting, and I've heard from other sources, was about some of these car dealers testing their cars on St. James Street South, which I've heard about for a while, and also Magnolia Avenue, which I've only heard of late. But could you consider approaching, speaking to those car dealerships about this? I think they're in the village of Hempstead, but if they're testing cars on our streets, anyway, if you could consider that and just get back to the Traffic Commission on that sometime?
Chairman, yes, we'd also probably include Hilton Avenue on that. They've done it in the past, it's lighter than it used to be, it used to be really a lot. We have pounded a few of their cars, because they don't sometimes drive it properly or have good drivers. So, but what we did last time, not only did we do, we did enforcement, we went to each of the car dealers. One of the car dealers actually has some property in the village, so that makes it easy, but we go to the, all the car dealers that we think are doing it, and the information we're receiving, we also work with Hempstead. So, we will contact all the car dealers and inform them that we'll be doing strict enforcement and asking for their help in compliance and to make our roads safer. We'll, we'll definitely take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Chief Totten.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees, Village residents, Fire Department does not have anything on the formal agenda this evening, but happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Just to give you some updated information for the month of November, the Fire Department responded to a hundred and twenty-four. This was a hundred and eleven signal eight. There we go. Hundred and eleven signal eight alarms, lesser alarms, food on the stove, five general alarms, including odor smoke, smoke in the house, that were all mitigated by the Fire Department promptly, and then we assisted eight different fire departments over the month of November for miscellaneous reasons. Obviously, it's the month of December, Christmas is going on, just like to provide a couple safety tips, including for Christmas trees and candles, please make sure to keep your tree at least three feet away from heat sources like fireplaces, radiators, space heaters, candles. Make sure to blow out any candles when you leave a room or your home, or when you go to bed, and please make sure to keep anything that burns at least three feet away from all sources, including fireplaces, wood stove, radiators. When it comes to buying gifts this year, and you're buying anything with lithium-ion batteries, as we've all seen in the news, they've caught fire, so please always follow the manufacturer's instructions, use the batteries that are designed for the device, only use the charging cord that came with the device, and please don't charge your device under a pillow, bed, or couch. And lastly, we have wrapped up Operation Santa last Friday, recovered over seventy-four miles of village roads. Many families expressed thanks to Santa and the volunteer firefighter elves, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, great job, you really add so much festivity to the village. Thank you for the work and also for the Santa runs.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just had one quick question. Chief, do you have any advice for residents, how to handle their chimneys on the twenty-fourth? Is there, is there anything we should be aware of?
Recommendation is always to have your chimney serviced every year, obviously. Use the Creosol burning logs, stuff like that.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you, Chief, Council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. I have two things on the formal agenda. The first one is the Board of Library Trustees Resolution. When the library was first granted a charter in nineteen fifty-six, the Board adopted a resolution on January twenty-one of fifty-six, which included a requirement that there'd be five library board members and be one from each section of the village and one at at large. It's, it's come to the attention of the Board that perhaps the best candidates should be found in the village at large and that not be restricted by having one from each section of the village. So, this resolution would amend the nineteen fifty-six resolution to permit the appointment of all five members of the Board at large rather than require that they be, that one come from each section of the village. Item number four is to set a public hearing on a proposed local law to establish a temporary moratorium on the receipt of applications and approval of certain building permits for certain retail uses in the village. This, this is to give the village an opportunity to review and study certain uses, including adult uses, tattoo parlors, vape shops, things of that nature, and to determine if or where those uses would be best served in the village. So, this would be a temporary moratorium to last for six months to give the Board an opportunity to review the zoning code and determine where these uses might be most appropriate.
Thank you.
Question, is there, why the six-month limitation? Could it be extended longer than that? Or is it?
Yes, the, the law that I've drafted has a six-month period with two, three-month extensions. But the idea of a moratorium is that it's not something that should last forever, they should make, you know, some quick work out of the review of the, you know, review of the ordinance.
Does that adversely impact any business from making an application for either renovation or in some other way to their property? For instance, if a restaurant wants to open, would this moratorium?
Yeah, no, this, this specifies certain uses, the ones that I mentioned, certain adult uses, you know, like adult bookstores, peep shows, adult movie theaters, things of that nature, tattoo parlors, vape shops, hookah lounges, those are the ones that are specified as, as the uses that are basically being put on hold.
That statute, we don't have that in front of us, correct? We just have the notice of public hearing in relation to a proposed local law?
That's correct, because it's now for the Board to study and determine where these uses might be most appropriate, and this gives the village, this gives the Board time to determine where these uses might, again, might be most appropriate.
The one page that I have in front of me is entitled Notice of Public Hearing in Relation to a Proposed Local Law.
That's the local law to establish the moratorium.
And is there some other document that contains the details of the moratorium?
Yes.
You can look at?
Yes, there's a, yes, there's a local, there's a, a local law that lists the entire, that lists the moratorium, or lists the, the, what's included in the moratorium, the types of uses.
So, a draft of that was sent to the Board?
I'm not sure, we prepared a draft.
Has everybody else seen that? Because I've only seen the notice of hearing, I haven't seen anything with the words vape shop, tattoo parlors, adult shops on it. Anyway, if you can get that out to us.
Right.
I'd appreciate it, so that we can consider that, and that the public, I mean, I would think the public needs to see that before the public hearing.
Yes, this will, it'll be.
Eighteen.
There'll be a publication in the newspaper, and the Board, the local law itself has to be presented to the Board at least, I think it is, ten days before the meeting, but you you will receive it, yes, if you haven't already.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council. So, Mr. Swazie is unable to be here tonight?
Oh, well, then, if I may, Mayor?
Sure.
I assume you're addressing yourself to the remainder of the items on the agenda?
Yeah.
And I'll just mention number seven, which is to ask the Board of Trustees to finalize the Creighton-Manning proposals with DPW. It's directing DPW Superintendent Barone to finalize proposals to implement the recommendations of Creighton-Manning's satellite study for changes to Stratford Avenue in the school zones of Stratford School and Homestead Schools. Now, these are pictured on the satellite study that's available under the Traffic Commission tab on the website, and it, the changes are fair, fairly said to be limited to bumpouts and crosswalks. The whole goal is simply to make the pedestrian and student crossings safer, analogous to what the Traffic Commission previously did on Seventh Street, and we're hoping by getting these proposals started and finalized and defined, we can then move on to an RFP. Is that fair, Superintendent?
Yes, we'll move into design, get some cost estimates, and come back to the Board to seek funding, and possibly bid the projects if we have to.
Thank you. So, that's the one that I wanted to mention, I don't know, I don't think there's any others that I am the appropriate spokesperson for. There's an announcement, of course, from the Traffic Commission, number three on the formal.
Actually, we put that into the Mayor Trustee question comment, so.
Okay.
You can make that comment. We do actually have Library Director here, and we have the Chair of the Library Board, who I think we're going to speak to the issue of the library fund down.
You could pass them down.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. The library is here tonight to request item number ten, board authorization is requested to ratify an extension pending award of a new contract for security to Securitas Security Systems USA to hold their rates and terms from January tenth of two thousand and twenty-four to March ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. To clarify, the ninety-day extension is with Securitas, however, the new contract is pending an RFP, which is currently out. We've extended that request to six companies that provide security services at other public libraries in Nassau County, including our current contractor. So, those are in, will be in review, and hopefully we'll make a decision and recommendation soon and within the ninety-day window. That's all I have, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, Marion, just to be clear, so this is just an extension of the existing contract for ninety days until we fund the next?
Correct, we've, we made a finite one-year contract with the vendor, who's, which is going to be up in January, and we won't have a recommendation for award in time to sign the contract. But it's, it's pending the next short while, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we can move on now to the Mayor Trustee questions, comments, and announcements. All right, so I'll begin, update on the removal of the stained glass windows and skylight from St. Paul's, as our village administrator is not here, I'll give that update. The contract with Bodie Studio of Architectural Arts, Inc., for the removal of eight nave stained glass windows, three sanctuary stained glass windows, and one skylight from St. Paul's at a cost of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred, has been signed. BSAA will provide free storage at its facility for a period of ten years at no cost to the village. The start date is set for early January, two thousand and twenty-four, with completion of removal expected to take forty-five days or less. There had been an issue of an insurance update on the advice of Council and insurance professionals. The village has taken efforts to make sure all stained glass windows are appropriately insured before work commences. And regarding the legal update from Council, questions had arisen about whether listing on the state and national registers, registers of historic places will restrict the removal and storage of the stained glass windows. Council's research, including a discussion with Chelsea Towers, the Nassau County representative or the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, is that, notwithstanding the listings, the village may undertake any action with regard to the building. One caveat is that any state or federal grants that are specifically earmarked for a preservation purpose would probably include a covenant requiring the village to honor any preservation purpose for which the grant is given. The removal and the storage of stained glass windows so as to preserve them would presumably pass any preservation test should the village seek to obtain grant money. I also wanted to give an update on St. Paul's. First off, I'd like to thank the trustees who've been working closely with me since the St. Paul's Public Opinion Poll to help plan our path forward, and all the residents who have reached out with offers of help. I'm excited to establish a new Mayor's Advisory Committee on St. Paul's, and these residents will be a great resource as we begin with the important steps needed to reach our goal of a project at St. Paul's that preserves part or all of the building, has widespread community support, and can be executed. As the Board of Trustees moves forward, we will be involving more resident volunteers, and the process will depend on everyone staying engaged on this issue. Our first order of business, together with village staff, is to research and find the company that is best equipped to help us most accurately develop a master plan for the St. Paul's campus that will engage the entire community, meet identified needs, and gain community support. Simultaneously, we will be exploring other community and recreation facilities and sharing with residents what such facilities could mean to our village. I recognize that no project can be executed without community support, and understand how critical it is that we use data to drive this process to a successful end. I just gave you the update on the stained glass windows. I also, as stated last month, we are restarting the process of addressing abatement, and we have issued a request for proposals for an environmental study. The abatement is something that must be done regardless of the St. Paul's project we eventually decide upon. As we approach resolving St. Paul's in this new and methodical manner, your Board of Trustees looks forward to managing this process to get the best recommendations for the community with continued support and engagement from residents. And I have five residents who are going to be on this Mayor's Advisory Committee on St. Paul's, and they are Bill Cavan, Soraya Gage, John Cantwell, Jim Apostolides, and Walter Beal, and I thank them for volunteering. Now, I'll turn it over to our Traffic Commissioner.
I have a question, if you would, Mayor. You just finished mentioning about preserving all or part of St. Paul's. Does that also include the preservation of the chapel? Because if you're taking the windows out and you're not preserving the chapel, where are they going? If you have any response to that?
So, I, we do not know where they're going. We know they're being taken out and stored to be preserved, but no one here can answer, because we're at the beginning of this process, where they will be going, but they can go right back into the chapel if the decision preserves the chapel, correct?
If the chapel is there?
Yes.
Okay. But if it's not, what are we spending the money for? Just, it, it's basically, what is the end game of what, how much of St. Paul's are you estimating will be saved or not?
That, I don't think it would be appropriate for me or anyone else up here to guess that. I think this is going, it's a complex issue, and we need to do this in the methodical manner we've been discussing, and we're at the beginning.
Now, do we also have any idea of how much will be the cost to remediate the space where the windows are taken out and the skylight is taken out? If there's a cost factor?
That was asked at the last meeting and fielded by Ralph Swazie. I'm not going to, I believe it is included, but you can certainly speak to him, he'll be back tomorrow, and ask him that question if you have that still.
Did you want to finish the?
Yes. Yes, we're onto the traffic.
I was supposed to do number three.
Yep.
Traffic Commission announcement. And the Traffic Commission is holding a meeting in, early in the new year, on January 11th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the large meeting room in the lower level of the Garden City Public Library. The Creighton Manning, the village's consulting engineers, will be presenting two traffic calming studies that were recently completed, both of which are on the village website under the Traffic Commission tab. One is the final speed limit study. As the public may recall, this was a study that was required by law if the village was going to consider lowering its speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. So that has been completed. It's available on the website, and the issue was whether lowering the speed limit would be beneficial to traffic safety in the village. So this was a threshold statutory requirement imposed by the state for the village even to consider lowering the speed limit. And this will be a meeting that will address that, as well as the second study. The second study is the final Stewart Avenue Road Diet Study, and this relates only to the village portion of Stewart Avenue, running from Franklin Avenue to Clinton Road. And the question is whether narrowing that road to two lanes in the village section would be beneficial to traffic safety. We've spoken at many Traffic Commission meetings about the fact that that roadway inexplicably explodes when it crosses Franklin Avenue into three lanes, and there doesn't seem to be any reason for it doing that as it passes by homes and apartment buildings. In addition, the Traffic Commission views that right-hand lane, especially from Franklin down to St. James, as an area that needs more protection for the parking spaces that are there in front of the apartment building and the pickup spaces that are there for people coming out of the apartment building. Those are essentially, at the moment, unprotected parking spaces, largely unmarked parking spaces, and we were hoping to make those areas a little safer. So that's what those two studies are going to address. If you have any input on those, you don't have to attend the meetings. You can just look at the studies on the website and send any of us on the Traffic Commission an email with your view, and your view will be considered when we're evaluating what steps, if any, to take in response to the conclusions and the options presented in these two studies. Thank you.
Trustee Kelly, with regard to the proposal by Sands to possibly utilize Franklin Avenue and going down to making a left onto Stewart Avenue, has any of that consideration been forwarded to Creighton Manning as far as the ability for that to occur or not occur?
Franklin Avenue to, I don't understand what, you're talking about Franklin and Stewart?
Yes.
And what?
One of the proposals by Sands was to bu, to take a bus from Mineola, go down Franklin Avenue, and make a left onto Stewart. Now, the question is whether any of the actions that Sands propose would be not compatible and would require Sands to use an alternate path of travel to get people from the Mineola train station to its facility.
Yeah, well, first of all, I haven't seen Sands commit to, they've explored a lot of traffic ideas. They haven't explored Westbury Train Station and Merrick Road as much as they obviously should, focusing on the Mineola Train Station. So I don't think there's anything, if you have anything definitive, I'm happy to send it on to Creighton Manning or have them consider it at the meeting at the library or both.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly, and the rest of the Traffic Commission up here for all the work. It's great to see so much effort going into the safety of our roadways.
Obviously, the Commissioner and Superintendent have been of great aid to us, invaluable in moving things forward quickly with their quick responsiveness when we need a survey, when we need an analysis, when we need an evaluation. They're the reason we were able to have a special meeting of the Traffic Commission tonight and be prepared with so much information on Magnolia Avenue.
If I can add one quick comment, Mayor. I would urge residents to attend these, these presentations. It is, it's funny, you think of traffic and, you know, your eyes could glaze over, and there's a lot of statistics, but it is really fascinating, and these are two important issues that will impact the entire village. Certainly Stewart Avenue will, and then a potential change in, in the speed limit. So I would urge you to take a look at, at the reports on the, on the website and attend. I think you'll find it to be quite interesting.
Okay. All right, any other trustee comments? All right, we'll move on to citizen comments on agenda items. So if there are any residents in the room with a comment, Mr. Colahan?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and fellow trustees. I'm Randy Colahan, 178 Kilburn Road, and Chairman of the Garden City Library Board.
Well, thank you for the great service that you've given the library over these many years, Mr. Colahan.
Oh, well, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. Very nice. I have a bunch of thank yous here, too. So, and anyway, I speak tonight on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees in the sport of Agenda Item Number 21, inserting library ground improvement. In attendance tonight with me are Trustees Mary McGuire and Trustee Colleen Foley. Also, the five members of the Library Board are completed by Vice Chair, at this time, Jermaine Greco, and Lo LeNorian. After meeting this summer with the village administration, the Library Board voted in August to support the security recommendations that came out of that meeting and from previous discussions. In attendance at the meeting and involved in previous discussions were Village Administration Administrator Ralph Swazi, Police Commissioner Ken Jackson, and I'm going to read your title poll, Chairman, Board of Commissioners of Culture and Recreation Affairs. I used to be Recreation Commissioner when I was a lifeguard many years ago. Yes, Paul Blake, Superintendent of Public Works, John Barone, Superintendent of Building, Giuseppe Giovinalli, I hope I got that name right, I'm sorry, Engineer Craig, Graham Vaddidi, as well as others on the village staff. Also at the meeting at that time were trustee liaison to the library Bruce Torino. Besides myself in attendance, Marianne Malagon was the Director and Library Assistant Director, Ralph Gatto. Thank you, everyone. I hope I got everyone there that was involved. But continuing, I want to emphasize that the library continues to be a safe haven. However, all libraries on Long Island continue to be under additional pressure to maintain a calm and peaceful atmosphere. Nassau Library Systems Assistant Director Nicole Scherer recently shared with Garden City Library Director Marianne Malagon that, I quote, "customer/patrons have become more aggressive and less tolerant of being asked to amend their behavior," end of quote. Director Malagon will be actually attending a meeting Monday with all library directors on Long Island sponsored by the FBI to review current dangers to the library and recommendations on how to prepare for them. We're continuing to make sure we keep a calm atmosphere. Specifically in Garden City Library, over the last two, over the last year, two of our security guards were physically accosted by visitors. During the past 13 months, six incidents have occurred with vehicles driving up to the front path of the library, endangering unaware pedestrians and hitting trees and planters. The last incident on November 22nd, the day before Thanksgiving, a van destined for the Garden City Hotel proceeded up to the front sidewalk, up to the front door, and the driver started to unload luggage. Funny, but if he hit somebody, it wouldn't be funny. And of course, only mostly happened at night. After the live, November 13th Library Board meeting ending about 9:30 at night, a female library trustee was approached in the dark outside the library by a male panhandler. The village police, under the direction of Police Commissioner Jackson, have been very responsive, and thank you for that, as always, to these incidents, and have stepped up patrols, especially when staff and patrons are leaving the library in the dark. The library ground improvement proposal addresses the concerns of these incidents. The village administration can provide details of the recommendations. On a personal note, I, as trustee, trustee Kelly has mentioned, I've been on the Board, Library Board now going on 22 years. During that time personally, at the, this village board since 2021, when, let's be honest, trustee positions were challenged, has been giving us tremendous support for the library. I can tell you, the library did not always receive this great board-wide support, and personally, I thank you. I'm not fighting budgets anymore, I'm fighting for good things, and this is a very recent thing. And specifically, thank you to our current village liaison Bruce Torino and past village liaisons Colleen Foley, Foley, and Larry Maciano. Maciano, thank you very much. In closing, thank you for the consideration of item 21. Library Board urges the Library Board to support the ground improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and that certainly brought to mind an item that I did hear about last week, and I meant to add to the special meeting of the Traffic Commission. So if Superintendent Barone and Commissioner Jackson could take a look at that issue, the fact that computer-generated directions, when they're telling people to make a right-hand turn on Hilton Avenue, apparently people misinterpret that and start to make a right-hand turn. I guess it's in the disability cutout there and drive up to the library, and perhaps we need to put in additional impediments to make sure that no vehicles take this option again. So if the two of you could look at that in the next few weeks, that would be great. Thank you.
That was part of the proposal that was in existence with regard to the planters. Those were actually, I believe, what, category four instructions?
Yeah.
That would be in place. Also, part of that has to do with the change in the lighting, from the ambient lighting that is there to a more intense lighting. But once those planters are in place, unless you're going 50 miles an hour with a dump truck, you're never going to get very far.
And those are about to be put in place?
Yes, that's the point. The whole proposal for the $50,000 has to do with that. Mr. Blake's crew during the summer did a spectacular job of ground clearing, planting trees, and they had the rededication of one of the trees. So yes, the, the impetus for this entire project starting from the summer to now was to ensure the safety of the library from errant vehicles, and also there is the protocol being put into place to make sure that cars from the parking lot likewise don't mount the curb to go theoretically to the front of the library.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other citizen comments on agenda items in the room? Mr. Alardi?
Good evening, Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. Regarding item one under the formal agenda, it'd be nice if you thought about term limits for library trustees. It's a five-year term. I don't think somebody should start nursery school and graduate college and still have the same people on the board. The other item, number one, in Section B of Finance, the fire hydrant inspections. I'm curious how often the fire hydrants are inspected?
We recently just awarded a bid to a contractor and inspect every single fire hydrant to repaint them, so this is as a result of the most recent inspections done a month or two ago?
And, and are they scheduled annually, every five years?
I'll check with Superintendent Stan Carey. He might, he might be on the line still. I'm not sure if you can answer that, but. I will ask him and get back to you. Oh, wait, is he there?
There he is.
I, I will ask him and I will respond.
Yeah, I'm just scared because you had non-working ones, right? And of course, you'd like to know that on some kind of regular basis, right, that they're tested.
I believe we do. I just, I don't want to give you long information.
All right.
Fire hydrants not only are tested, but often flushed. And I believe they're flushed twice a, well, once a year that I know of, probably the day that I do laundry. That is one of the criteria that the village goes, its infrastructure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the flushing, just, you know, something like that I would think would have a periodic inspection so you don't encounter hydrants that aren't working. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room with a comment on a, an agenda item? Anyone on Zoom with a comment on an?
Oh. Sorry, Mr. Carey, Mr. Carey just answered me via text message. Going forward, they'll be inspected every year as required.
Thank you. Sure.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and happy holidays coming up. Obviously, we won't see each other for another year. My question is pertaining to insurance update on the stained glass windows. You say that the village is taking effects, efforts to make sure that they're appropriately insured. Do you have an idea what the insurance is going to be on the windows and how much the premiums are going to be?
I didn't catch the last part of what you said, Ben.
How, how much the premiums are going to be? The insurance premiums?
The person that's going to be removing the windows is, has insurance, liability insurance in the event, you know, God forbid they get damaged during the process. In terms of a particular value on the windows, that hasn't been determined at this point and probably won't be until they're completely restored.
All right, so after they're restored, then you have to have somebody, an expert in assessing those type of windows to come in and give you, give you a number, and then you go with that number to the insurance company and try to get insurance on it. Is that pretty much the way it's going to go?
So are you, you're talking about insurance to cover when the windows are being removed? Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Oros?
No, no, it's, you already said that you have insurance to cover the windows, but I'm sort of hesitant in, to know, if you don't know the value of the windows, how are you, how are you estimating the insurance value?
All right, so we, there's been conversations with our insurance consultant and with Mr. Bodie's and village council, and we are comfortable with the insurance, though I'm not sure how to answer the question. I think you're talking about an unknown value, you know?
As I said, Mr. Oros, that he has like, very high liability limits in the event that something happens during the course of them being removed, packaged, placed, and
Transported.
Transported, exactly. And at that point, I guess, when, once they're fully restored, then we'll have a value on the windows, but.
I don't believe he's talking to that. He's talking to the first-party coverage. So what happens in the Bodie contract? Yes, he has GL coverage. Yes, he has GL coverage.
Right.
Whether he has enough, that's a different story.
Okay, well, I reviewed it.
Because I've paid cases a lot more than he has coverage for. But the question had to do with regard to the first-party coverage, meaning that if the windows were damaged or destroyed through no negligence of Body, who would then repay the village for the cost of the property? For instance, the village has a number of different policies, one of which would be first-party coverage. If you have a flood, if you have a fire, and it is then reimbursed. First-party coverage is similar to what the village recouped when the senior center had a flood.
Right.
So, the question that Mr. Oros is asking is essentially, what is the valuation of the first-party coverage for the windows during that period of time that they are in the possession of Mr. Body? I have no idea.
Mr. Oros, is that your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Torino. You pretty much hit the nail on the head. And without that number, you know, right now, I don't know what the premiums would be.
You don't know what the what?
Premiums would be on that insurance.
Okay, so, I don't know if we want to just, yeah.
Right, yeah. I mean-
Okay.
It's the only way we can at this point.
My best guess is that it's going to be a rider on the village's first-party coverage.
Well, he hasn't talked about that, but I'll review it with him.
All right, thank you, Mr. Oros. Anything else? All right, anyone else on Zoom with a comment on an agenda item? All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes for the November 16, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. Their motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the formal agenda, beginning with the Board of Trustees Resolution, Library Board of Trustees Resolution.
Move.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously. And we'll move on now to appointments by the mayor, subject to Board of Trustees' approval. And I'll begin with appointing Linda Ryan, a proposal to appoint Linda Ryan to 53 Washington Avenue as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to begin January 1st, 2024, and to expire December 31st, 2028. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
I mean, I, I saw her as well-qualified, and I support her and join in the motion to appoint her.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously. And I'm also proposing Celia Peterson, who I see in the room here, who's been serving on the ADRB. She's been acting as chair, and I'm proposing that she be named as Chairperson of the Architectural Design Review Board. Is there a motion?
I move. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimously. Thank you for your service, Ms. Peterson. All right, and also on the formal agenda, due to the motion to set the date for the public hearing, a local law to amend the code of the village of Garden City in relation to establishing a temporary moratorium on the application.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously. Do we have any citizen comments on non-agenda items? Anyone in the room?
Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. Regarding the conversation you had earlier about the car dealerships, I think a big issue is when the dealers are racing their cars from Roosevelt Field's storage area back to the dealership. I haven't noticed in my area on Meadow Street, the test driving of vehicles that was discussed earlier, but the, they're constantly up and down Meadow Street, back and forth to Roosevelt Field, moving their cars. And it's a half a mile from Clinton to Boylston on Meadow, and there's only two side streets that are T-intersections. So, they blow through those stop signs that are on Tremont and College and just fly back and forth. I had discussed earlier, and I know on the Creighton Manning Report, there was humps discussed for Meadow in that area. They're doing the paving on Meadow Street now. I know the section between Clinton and Boylston is probably not going to happen until next spring after they do some work with the flooding in that area. So, I would, you know, hope if you're going to move the temporary humps, maybe Meadow could be a spot to look at for that. This is not just the car dealerships. At night, those stop signs don't exist. You sit in your house and you hear them go, you know, people say 50, 60 miles an hour. It happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments on non-agenda items? Yes?
Well, I think that is, I would just comment, Mr. Alardi, that I think that is right, and Meadow between Clinton and Lindbergh is an area we're looking at in terms of speed
Ms. Krug?
Well, we had success today. The appellate court ruled, they supported the Supreme Court ruling, so I think that's something to celebrate. George and I were interviewed at about 4:30 at our home by News 12. He made great speeches, but I wore the red sweater, so I got all the publicity. You know, it's just amazing to me. One of the things that I did, I sent a letter to the MTA because we went over to Stewart Avenue, and we noticed that there was still construction going on on the circus train line. So, my note to the MTAs, I just would like to open it so I could read it and not make a mistake. Basically, I said to them, we noticed construction all around the circus train line, and I explained where it's located, just south of 7th Street and Stewart Avenue by the Garden City Railroad Station, and it goes all the way to the Coliseum. We noticed construction going on past Quentin Roosevelt Boulevard. So, I sent a letter to them, and their letter was, it was ridiculous. Thank you for contacting us. Your feedback is very important to us, and we are working hard to improve your customer experience. You can expect to hear back from us within one to three days. And they told me that they don't have any projects going on in the area, that they think PSENG might be doing something. So, do we issue permits if PSE, if PSENG or MTA is doing work on the spur? Don't they have to come to us for a permit?
I would say no for the following reason. Railroads have their own right of way and have had their own right of way before they ever put any track down. You will notice that there are, in fact, areas in the village, if you take an aerial view, specifically off by Arthur, you'll see a whole strip of land. Now, interestingly enough, in August of 2022, I saw photographs and I sent them to all the board members with regard to railroad ties going in place. So, while the spur, where the railroad went to, that can't actually go unless it is extended. And I had the same fear that you did-
Extended to, from where?
Extended to Roosevelt Field. It actually stops by Mitchell Field, by Oak Street.
It stops behind the Avalon, the Avalon Apartments on Stewart.
That is where the, there was an intended intermodal station there when I was a trustee back in 1997. But the interesting thing about using the spur and utilizing it is they're have, they will have to go to the railroad, Federal Railroad Agency, because you'll notice the lights that we have on Franklin Avenue, the ones that go overhead, they're going to have to do it there. And unless they start putting the barriers and the crossing guards there, the use of that spur for people, at least presently, would be restricted. So, what construction did you see occurring?
Well, it was in the distance. There were a lot of workmen working on the tracks, and we've seen them, like over by Clinton Road now, right by the train. I don't know if they're working on the tracks there, but we saw work going on on the train. We were driving, you know, down past the, right behind the post office on Stewart.
Yeah, well-
I don't know. I asked the question, what are you guys doing? And of course, it's, well, you know, we do work on our trains once in a while, and, you know, just lip service. And I was just wondering, you know, if you have any suggestions on trying to get an answer on this? Because my feeling is they're going to open it up.
In regards-
It would really be a circus train.
In regards to the people who are working near Clinton Road by the Emmett Place Firehouse, it's our water main contractor, they're jacking the new water main under the railroad tracks.
It's not that construction, it's past that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, it's not, not in Garden City, it's past that.
Well, the track-ling equipment is huge, and we saw it over by Cherry Valley Avenue when we did the bridge. That is a massive piece of equipment. If that shows up, I'd be real worried.
Well, you know, I don't want to find that, that track-moving equipment is there one day and say, well, I contacted them, but we heard nothing. And, you know, it's my concern because we, you know, talk about traffic. I mean, thinking ahead, if that casino goes in, we better have mitigation in place, big time in Garden City.
I'll pass on to Ralph Swazi.
Thank you.
Because he'd be the person to ask about that, to find out what he knows.
Yeah, I mean, this is lip service, and other members of my say no to the casino group said they're just like, you know, not telling you.
Well, thank you for your advocacy, Lynn, on behalf of the village. Appreciate it.
We'll get the answers. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, Lynn.
Thank him. Me, too.
Good job, George.
Any other comments in the room on non-agenda items? Any other comments on Zoom on non-agenda items? All right, we are going to go into a session for advice of council. We will not be making decisions or returning and reopening the meeting tonight. So, do we have a motion during the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.